Can you hear me?
I can hear somebody.
Yes, we can.
This is Dave Schneer. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we are working with getting Betsy connected, so give us one moment. This is Brandy with staff. We're working with getting the chair connected now.
Hey, Dave.
Yeah.
And Ken, this is my last meeting. I'm not being reappointed.
Oh, no. How come?
Well, because I've served six terms.
That's not enough. You can add my slot.
I asked not to be reappointed, so.
Okay, so what are you going to do with all your free time?
I don't know, but go see my grandchildren, I guess.
That's a good idea.
A little more now that I can, yeah. Now it's a little safer, so. Yeah, so this is, but I've enjoyed, you know, you and I have butted heads any number of times, but I respect you.
We do what we can, you know, both of us. You going to be active in the campaigns at all?
Uh, no, not too much. I, um, I have a little trouble with real-life politicians.
You too, huh?
Yeah, I really don't like to see how the sausage is made. I really, you know, so I really don't.
I did it. I did my deal, was a presidential appointee and quit because they were idiots and I'm never going to do it again.
All right, so just a quick interruption. This is Brandy again with staff. Betsy should be, it looks like she's here now, so Betsy, your mic has been enabled, so you just need to unmike yourself and we can get started.
Okay, I can't, um, turn on my video for some reason. So, do we have all of the committee members here? I guess we'll find out when we take the roll.
Looks like an awful lot of them are.
Yeah. I need to change my view so I can see people because I can't see them. Okay, all right, well, let's start with topic one. Let's open the meeting. Welcome, everybody, and we have some business to do first. First thing we have to do is go through the bureaucratic business with, that allows us to do our remote meeting, and so I'm gonna read all of this stuff, and I apologize in advance because it's kind of cumbersome, as you know. All right. "To conduct this meeting wholly electronically and to effectuate both the emergency procedures authorized by FOIA and the emergency ordinance, the Exception Review Committee needs to make certain findings and determinations for the record. It's cumbersome, so I ask you in advance for your patience. First, because each member of the Exception Review Committee is participating in this meeting from a separate location, we must verify that a quorum of members is participating and that each member's voice is clear, audible, and at an appropriate volume for all the other members. Accordingly, I'm going to conduct a roll call and ask each Exception Review Committee member participating in this meeting to state your name, the district you represent, and the location from which you're called, you're participating. I ask that each of you pay close attention to ensure that you can hear each of your colleagues. Following this roll call, we will vote to establish that every member can hear every other member." So, let's start with Ann Cantor.
This is Ann Cantor, and I am an at-large representative. This is my last meeting, and I am in McLean.
Are you here, Amy? I think you are. I see an AG. Let's move on to Ed Monroe. All right, how about Ken Lanfear?
I didn't hear, I didn't hear Ed Monroe. Did you, did he speak?
I did not.
Okay.
I did not.
He's muted.
Okay, Ed, you wanna unmute yourself and tell us, and answer the roll call? Does someone have controls over the mute buttons inside the county? Because it seems like that may be an issue here.
No, so I've enabled, this is Brandy, staff, I have enabled everyone's mic, I can see that, but they have to go onto their own microphone and select it to unmute yourself at the top bar. I, you are all enabled now. So I, I have done that, so everyone shows enabled, but you still have to physically go in and unmute yourself on your own device.
Okay, Amy, while we've got you here, maybe you will answer the roll call and tell us.
Amy is here. I'm in Anadale, Virginia.
Okay, thank you. Ed Monroe, are you here?
He is, but he can't unmute. I see him.
Okay. Well, we'll come back to Ed. Perhaps he'll figure it out. Do we have Ken Lanfear? Ken, can you unmute yourself?
No.
Well, this is going to be a difficult meeting. How about Alexis Dickerson? Are you here?
Alexis Dickerson, Lee District, and I'm currently in Alexandria, Virginia.
Thank you very much. Okay, so Ed raises hand. Ed, can you speak? Well, this is. All right, let's try Elizabeth Martin. I'm here in Alexandria, Virginia, representing the Mount Vernon District. Sue Schuman, are you here?
Yes, Sue Kovak-Schuman, Providence District in Mantua.
Okay, David Schneer?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, and you are representing?
I'm sorry, Springfield District. I'm in my home in Burke.
Psalm Govender, are you here? I see your SG there. Can you unmute yourself and answer the roll call?
He's waving and he can't.
Oh, right, right, right. Now it works.
Okay, good.
I, Psalm Govender, yes, Sully District.
And Barbara Ryan, are you here?
Yes, I, I am here. I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
I'm an at-large member and I live in McLean. At, at-large.
We also have Mary Smith.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I represent Mason District and I'm at home in Falls Church.
Okay, thank you very much. And now let's circle back and see if Ed has, is able to unmute himself yet.
Yes, can you hear me?
Barely.
Okay.
That's a little better.
Hi, I'm Ed Monroe. I'm representing the Drainsville District, and I'm calling from McLean, calling in from McLean.
Okay, thank you, Ed. And Ken Lanfear, have you figured out how to unmute yourself?
Well, I figured it out long ago, but it finally let me unmute.
Oh, good, okay.
But anyway, yes, this is Ken Lanfear, representing the Hunter Mill District, and I'm coming in from high above Reston.
Okay, welcome. Thank you all. Is that everybody that we need to call on? Is there anybody else here who thinks they're representing the district on the Exception Review Committee?
Um, Betsy, one thing I wanted to note is that Lee District was in the process of doing a name change to Franconia District, I believe, so I don't know if that's, I don't know if there's anything that we need to do to update that language within our own committee, but I just wanted to flag that. I wasn't actually sure which one I should say.
Well, I, I, I'm sure by the time we have our next meeting, it'll be clear, and it will be Franconia District. Thank you very much, Alexis. Okay. All right, at this point, I'll pass the virtual gavel, gavel to the Vice Chairman, Ed Monroe, so that I may be heard to make the requisite motion. "I move that each member's voice may be adequately heard by each other member of the Exception Review Committee." Do I hear a second?
Second.
It was Ken Lanfear who seconded. The motion is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and the motion carries. Second, having established that each member's voice may be heard by every other member, we must next establish the nature of the emergency that compels these emergency procedures, the fact that we are meeting electronically, what type of electronic communication is being used, and how we have arranged for public access to this meeting. Therefore, I move that the state of emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic makes it unsafe for the Exception Review Committee to physically assemble and unsafe for the public to physically attend any such meeting, that as such, FOIA's usual procedures, which require the physical assembly of the Exception Review Committee and the physical presence of the public cannot be implemented safely or practically. I further move that the Exception Review Committee may conduct this meeting electronically through a dedicated video conferencing platform, Microsoft Teams, and that the public may access this meeting by accessing the hyperlink provided on the ERC's dedicated webpage, or by calling 1-571-429-5982 and entering phone conference ID number 201064210 pound sign. Would someone second the motion?
Second.
Is that Amy Gould?
Sue.
Oh, Sue Schuman, seconded the motion. The motion is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and the motion carries. Finally, it's next required that all the matters addressed on today's agenda must address the emergency itself, are necessary for continuity in Fairfax County Government, and/or are statutorily required or necessary to continue operations and the discharge of the Exception Review Committee's lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. I so move. Do I hear a second?
Second. Ken, second.
I confirm that Ken Lanfear seconded the motion. The motion is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and the motion carries. Next. "The Virginia General Assembly made several important changes to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act during the 2022 session. One of those changes relates to electronic meetings of the entire public body, as well as the remote participation of individual members in meetings when a physical quorum of the physical, of the public body is assembled. As you're aware, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the General Assembly authorized fully electronic meetings when it's impractical, impracticable, or unsafe to assemble a quorum in one location if either the governor or local government declared a state of emergency. The 2022 amendments, which became effective September 1st of this year, further expand the ability of certain boards, authorities, and commissions to hold fully electronic meetings, called all virtual meetings, in the absence of a state of emergency. The subsequent policy, as drafted by the County Attorney's Office, sets forth in detail the requirements for holding such a meeting. The most significant limitations are: All virtual meetings are limited to twice per calendar year, or 25% of the meetings held per calendar year, whichever is greater. Second, all virtual meetings cannot be held consecutively. Third, no more than two members of the public body may be together in a physical location unless that location is open to the public. If a closed session is held, the public body must resume transmission of the meeting to the public before voting to certify a closed meeting. Finally, to conduct an all-virtual meeting, the ERC must adopt in advance a policy that permits these meetings. So, we had posted on the website the revised remote participation policy and the all-virtual public meetings policy that will allow us to have all virtual meetings, subject to the constraints I just read. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt both policies. Do I hear a second?
Second, Ken Lanfear.
Thank you, Ken. Lanfear has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and the motion carries. All right, we are done with those pieces of business. Thank you very much for your patience. And our next item on the agenda is the approval of the October 6, 2021 meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Cantor.
Is that Ann Cantor? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Was that Sue Schuman?
Yes.
Okay, so the minutes, is there any discussion, any suggested revisions? All right, hearing and seeing none. Well, everybody in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's our second order of business. Third. We posted, rather late in the game, a slight revision of our draft motion template. And I believe Nicola may have the template that she can share with us in case people wanna look at it. We had developed this template last year in an effort to kind of guide our discussions and focus on the findings, which are the central focus of what we're doing in this committee. And it's very similar, but we already adopted. It's a little more streamlined and it's a little more, a little easier to read, perhaps, which we have to do when we're working electronically. So, I'd like to hear a motion to adopt the revised draft motion template.
This is Mary Smith. I make a motion to adopt the draft template.
Thank you, Mary. Do I hear a second?
Yes, Sue.
Sue Schuman has seconded. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. All right, the motion carries, and we have adopted the revised draft motion template. And next, we get to introducing our new committee members. Perhaps you'll turn on your video so we can see you. We have Mary Smith from Mason District, and we have Barbara Ryan from at-large. We welcome you, and we're very glad to have you on our committee, and we look forward to working with you. And while we're talking about personnel changes, I'd also like to say, uh, thank Ann Cantor, who is, this is her last meeting with the Exception Review Committee. She's decided, she's been on probably longer than any other member in all time. I'm not sure if that's right, Ann, but I suspect it is.
I, I, I was from the beginning. I have served six terms, 18 years. And I, I think it's time for somebody else and new, well, to look at it.
Well, thank you for your service, and I would have made a cake. Thank you both, and I thank you, and thank you both who are joining the committee. And I'd also like to introduce our new clerk to the Exception Review Committee, who's Nicola Mutessa. Nicola, I don't know if you're on here, and if you can.
Hello.
Hi. Can we see you?
Yes, my camera is on.
Oh, it is?
Yes. Do you see me?
I see you. I can see you.
All right, so, um, thank you and welcome to new members, and thank you to old members that are departing. Okay, now, partly because we are reconvening after such a very long time, and partly because we have new members, we thought it would be a good idea to have a very brief overview of our, our task of the, of the Exception Review Committee and what we're about. And so, I have just a few slides here to sort of run through. Our charge is really focused upon Article 6 of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance, and that covers applications for land disturbing activity within the sea. And that covers applications for land disturbing activity within the seaward 50 feet of the resource protection area. And we also approve or disapprove accessory structures in the RPA. That's what we'll be talking about today. And encroachments that don't otherwise qualify for review under the loss of buildable area exception or accessory structure provisions. Next. Next slide, please. So the process basically is that applicants submit a request for an exception. It has to include a water quality impact assessment. The staff prepares recommendations. We, or many of us, go out and visit the site to see it on the ground and review all the materials in the application and prepared by staff. We conduct a public hearing and we approve or disapprove the exception request. We can impose conditions on our approval and in order to maintain the intent of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance. And we can also defer a decision in order to consider a modification of an exception request. And if an applicant disagrees with our decision, he or she can appeal it to the Board of Supervisors, who could either overturn it or affirm it. Next slide. So this is really the heart of what we're doing. We approve an exception request only if the following six findings are met. One is that the requested exception is the minimum necessary to afford relief. Second, that the exception will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied by this law to other property owners who are subject to its provisions and who are similarly situated. Third, that the exception is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance and is not a substantial detriment to water quality. Fourth, the exception request is not based on conditions or circumstances that are self-created or self-imposed. Fifth, that reasonable and appropriate conditions are imposed as warranted that will prevent the allowed activity from causing a degradation of water quality. Next. So our purpose is defined by the laws to protect and improve water quality by protecting the riparian buffer. The Water Quality Impact Assessment, which the applicant must submit, is the basis for determining whether water quality will be adequately protected if an exception is approved. And the staff gives us recommendations for approval, disapproval, and conditions. But we decide based upon the application, the staff report, and information presented in this public hearing. And interpreting and applying these six criteria may be difficult and subjective, but we do have guidance provided by the Department of Environmental Quality and the county attorney. Often, we often consult him to help us interpret the law. That's it. Thank you very much. You can take down the slide now. Nicola. Okay. Now we move on to our public hearing. And for the benefit of those attending, especially the members, I would like to have us use the raise hands function to talk so that we can maintain order in our in our discussions and in our presentation. Especially when we get to the part where the members are discussing among themselves what they think about this proposal. So if you can, and I hope that Nicola and Brandy can help me monitor who wants to speak when. So let's now open the public hearing. And call it to order. We do have one written comment in support of the application that I'll read when we get the appropriate time. Has anyone else signed up in advance to speak? That we know of? Brandy or Nicola?
No, there is no one else.
Okay, and are there any other members of the public who are in attendance who want to speak at the public hearing? And if so, we need your name so that Nicola could compile a list of speakers. I don't hear anybody. Of course, they may be. Philip Latassa wishes to speak. Okay, Nicola, would you take down Philip Latassa's name and we will now have two speakers who will address this this application? Anybody else? Okay. So now I'd like to request any disclosures from ERC members who might have any conflict of interest in this case or any appearance of impropriety that you need to bring to our attention. Does anybody have anything they need to tell us about? All right, I think not. All right, so now let's move to the staff presentation. The staff representative is going to make a short summary and it'll be about two minutes long. So go ahead, Camlin, whenever you're ready.
Hello, this is Camlin Lewis. I am the staff person on this case.
Speak up.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
You gotta get closer.
I can't get any closer with the mic. I don't know why my.
It's all right. I'm just turning up my volume. It's all right.
I think you're okay, Camlin. Why don't you proceed?
Okay. Exception Review Committee, public hearing. Exception number 1996 WRPA 016-1 on Water Quality Impact Assessment. 1996 WQ-005-1 at 917 One Avenue in McLean in Virginia. Next slide, please. The applicant has requested to install an in-ground swimming pool about 18 by 13 feet with a spa and a deck. And they wish to install it. I've shown you the picture here on some previously disturbed ground. The proposed increase in impervious area is just shy of 1,000 square feet, 998 square feet. The application is submitted under Section 186-8, which is for accessory structures. And this particular disturbance is actually proposed in the seaward 50 feet. Next slide, please. We put together a series of aerial images, which are also in the staff report, which show the conditions on the property. I believe the first image there, it's quite small. It's in 2003 when the RPA was designated, going right up to 2021 in the bottom right-hand corner there, which is the image that you see today. As you see, it's very difficult to ascertain the level of vegetation on the property, particularly on the opposite side of the stream because you don't see that if you have the tree cover in the summer months and in the winter months, it is still very difficult to see that. But those images are there and there's further details in the staff report. Next slide, please. I've also put together there a summary of what's happened on the property since the lot was created back in 1947, right up until today, which the application for this pool has been requested. And that's also including the staff report and then some details there. The staff report details staff's position on the case. And I think it's time just to turn it over to the applicant and let them present you know, their case and why they believe that the request should be approved.
Thanks, Camlin. How are we going to handle the PowerPoint on my end? Should I just share a screen?
We're about to pull that up. Give us one second.
Sure. Okay, so obviously the first slide is sort of restated, Camlin, although I think I need to put dash one. If it's still dash one, I thought it was technically our second submission of that, but let's hop over to the next one. Because the Zeca Noble family would really like to say thank you for all the efforts of Camlin in particular and the ERC staff who came out to look at the site. It was really helpful to work through this and we feel like we've got an application that will that is approvable and it'll stand on its own two feet. So thank you very much. Let me hop to the next. So as Camlin stated, this is a request for an accessory structure. It's a pool and spa with an accompanying small pool deck in the RPA. The site's located in McLean, sort of nestled in off of Georgetown Pike in between Dolly Madison and 495. It's also, it's in the Drainsville district. Hop to the next. So the existing conditions of the site, it was originally, it was a house originally constructed on it back around 1954. It's on the Aerial 54. And over time, you know, things developed and came up. And in the mid 90s, the property was redeveloped. Mr. Zeca and Ms. Noble bought the property in July 2020. It's about one acre and as was noted in the staff, I guess, staff presentation or the staff report, one of the key features is the fact that that unnamed tributary to Dead Run runs right sort of down the middle of the back of the site. So it bisects the lot pretty much, leaving a forested section on the backside and the residence and associated yard retaining walls on the, it's on the west side of the property. This was redeveloped prior to establishing RPA on the property in 2003. And currently, it's two-story brick residence with a lawn. And due to the location of that stream, a good portion of the, well, the entire backyard and portions of the house are actually in the 50-foot seaward portion of the RPA buffer. That side, that 50-foot seaward buffer has been disturbed. So let's click to the next slide. Just a couple of photos showing. And for the ERC members that came by and I got to meet, we had a nice walk around, sort of looking at the area where the pool's going to go on the left-hand side here. And then the second one on the right is looking over the back into the reforestation area. And keep in mind, most of that cleared area there is a sanitary sewer easement. The final picture is sort of a panoramic, looking down the stream with the house on the left and the reforestation area on the right-hand side. Next slide. So the proposed applications for an accessory structure, it's for a pool, and the disturbance is going to be 2,377 square feet. This disturbance area, it's entirely within the maintained lawn area that's perched up on top of a retaining wall section. So most of the backyard slopes down to the tributary. And there is a perched portion that was established with the reconstruction of the house or redevelopment of the house that created a flat backyard. And that's going to be the location where the pool is. Right now, it's an existing maintained grassed area. So there is no native vegetation through there. And as a result, no native vegetation will be removed in this application. The pool is situated, and the only place that it can be situated on this site, there's no way to avoid it, avoid putting it in the RPA. And then one thing I wanted to correct on the pool sizing is that it's actually 18 by 36 feet. That's in the application. I think it's just a typo in Camlin's presentation. Okay. Off to the next part. So to offset and mitigate for the proposed pool, we're proposing reforestation of the lot. And a good portion of it will be the existing yard. So most of the existing grassed portion is going to be either turned into the pool or reforested with shrubs. And then there's an additional larger area over in the back. And we'll probably touch on that a little bit later, well, in a few seconds here. But the the reason for the alignment of this is we had to look at the existing canopy and the existing areas that are possible to reforest. So that's what you're seeing right here outside of the sanitary easement. And the two little blobs on the right-hand side down there and the bottom right on that slide, the two little triangles or hexagons, those, the trees and the trees from that section will be relocated over into the larger sections on the east side of the stream. Just because we didn't want to put large trees near the house. So, but it's the same number of trees that would be required for the square footage of reforestation. And as a result, only a minimal portion of the backyard will remain grass. Okay, next slide. In addition to the proposed reforestation, the applicant will put in a planter box, which will treat the increase in impervious area of 998 square feet. And in addition, super silt fence will be used around the limits of disturbance to protect that stream from any development. Flip over. Okay, so and Camlin pointed out for applications, and that was extremely helpful to have those other stuff. That being said, it's not a situation where we're talking about precedent or setting precedent or using precedent on this. Like I said, this application really does respect the ordinance as far as the intent and what we're trying to do and what is typically or should be allowed by the ordinance. Of those, there was only one that had a 50-foot seaward encroachment. And that was a denied application. But I wanted to make sure that we understand exactly what that application was proposing. It was a very different type of project. That particular one had a pool and had a deck. And that application was for the expansion of that pool deck. So it wasn't to establish a new use, it was to expand the use. And the proposed expansion, nearly the same impervious increase as ours. It was 750 something square feet versus our 998. And they did not propose a stormwater management or plantings. So I just wanted to highlight that and go to the next one. One of the other applications that was highlighted is the Collier Residence. This is actually the rear adjoining property to our property. It's on 907 Mack Hall. So as you're looking at our forested buffer, it's the house on the other side of that forested buffer. The pool and spa and deck was nearly the same size, nearly the same design, just a little bit different orientation. They had a net increase of 952 square feet of impervious. However, they had twice the encroachment areas. Collier had almost 5,000 square feet where we're at just about 2,400 square feet. So it's important, that's a good way to illustrate that we are pinning things as tightly as possible and keeping the disturbance to the minimum necessary. And the other thing, as far as the 50-foot buffer encroachment, Collier actually got up to about 10 feet. And it just so happens that the orientation of that lot allowed for it. It's a very similar footprint off the back of the house as to what we proposed. And so that was presented to the ERC and approved. Next slide. And so to look at some of the comments on the staff report, staff was talking about reforestation on the east side of the stream. They desire reforestation. And based on the aerial imagery, and Camlin touched on this, it's difficult to tell what's going on from aerial imagery. So in general, we respectfully disagree with the fact that it may be less vegetated now than it was in 2003. But I want to keep into context, again, aerial imagery is very difficult. It depends on time of year. But no violations for unauthorized clearing have ever been issued for the property. The other thing is our proposal is to reforest. So if we keep the big picture in mind, we propose to reforest all the areas on the property, regardless of whether or not some die-off in the buffer has occurred over the years. The application will result in the maximum reforestation that we can have within reason on a property. And there is a hindrance to the ability to revegetate based on that sanitary easement. But again, we're open to discussing addition of some seeding in that easement. Right now, there's nothing proposed to that easement. But during the site visits, some discussions came up with members about adding some riparian seed to that area. Okay. And then, and again, big picture, the RPA condition will be improved as a result of this request. Excellent. Another question was on the stability of the retaining wall. Plans, when finalized and submitted for approval to Fairfax County, will show that it has no effect on the existing wall. So, that'll be demonstrated to reviewer satisfaction. And then, the other comment was the unauthorized encroachments were not shown on the 1994 plat. Footbridges, bench paving, and electrical lighting. So, one thing to keep in mind is RPA wasn't on the property until 2003. So, as far as a point of reference, the 1994 plat is not really the base point of where we start looking. Footbridges in particular are visible in aerials prior to 2003. The trails, the stepping stone path is an exempt activity for passive recreation. And again, this is, this kind of stuff, I don't think it's the intent to take an application or someone that comes before you for an application and then just kind of start going through, digging through things that have not been noted or have not been, you know, have not been pointed out. But we will coordinate with LDS regarding that date of installation and exempt status of the certain features that we're talking about. Next. So, essentially, that's it. And after considering the requirements and what you're really looking for, the five components that we need to find, I think we have demonstrated straight in this water quality impact assessment that this is a good plan for the activity proposed and is approvable by the ERC. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have statements from other interested parties who might want to speak. And I have one that was submitted to us, which I will read now. It is from Mr. Tom Jacoby of McLean, Virginia, who says, "Thank you for the opportunity to respond to this hearing process. I am trustee of 913 Wan Avenue, which my family has owned since the mid 1960s. In fact, I grew up in the house and can speak to the history and development of the neighborhood and 917 Wan Avenue. I had never spoken to John and Lindsay Zeca, the owners of 917, prior to receiving notice of the hearing. I reached out to better understand the project, and my views below are informed by this discussion and my history with the location. I support the homeowner's application for approval to build a pool. The design they have chosen, which is entirely behind an existing retaining wall on already leveled land, will not impact the stream below nor my property next door. In fact, the proposed pool will be on the site of a previous pool attached to the former home on the property. That house was demolished in the mid 1990s when the current house was constructed. My mother has confirmed that the pool was there in 1964, when she and my father built our house next door. The fact that a pool existed on the same site for decades helps show that approval of this proposal is consistent with the RPA. I also understand from the homeowner that they have committed to significant efforts to reforest the far bank of the stream. Therefore, I see the proposal as enhancing the stream and the neighborhood and believe this proposal merits approval. Thank you again for the opportunity to share my views. Sincerely, Tom Jacoby."
Beth, this is staff. I just want to confirm, it seems that Tom Jacoby is on the meeting. So, I see him. So, I don't know, Mr. Jacoby, if you want to speak or if that was sufficient. But I did want to note, he's here.
I don't really have anything else to say, other than I think it's a very reasonable plan. And like when he brought up to me about the house, I started thinking about it. When I was a kid, we used to swim in that pool. And I had forgotten about the pool being there. And then I checked with my mom, and it was true. So, the homeowner was, I think, put it in, well, we moved in in 64. So, I think it's a great addition to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jacoby. And I believe we have one more speaker, Philip Latassa.
Yes. What I wanted to say was that in the entire history of humanity, none of the billions of people who exist now or who have ever existed have ever needed a backyard swimming pool. And the minimum necessary accommodation for this property was already granted by the building of the house within the 50-foot seaward section of the RPA. However, if I understand from the presentation, there's already a structure, a retaining wall, that is a real intrusion into the RPA. And the swimming pool is going to be built entirely behind that structure. So, perhaps it won't be any worse than it already is. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Philip Latassa. And do we have any other people who want to offer statements in support or opposition to this application? All right. Now, let's hear the staff present the position of the director. It'll be about five minutes.
Position of the director. This information is also within the staff report. But just for the purposes of the hearing, we can go through these again here. The required findings, the requested exception to the criteria is the minimum necessary to afford relief. These are, this is the first required finding. So, the impervious area, as you look at this, or this lot is 6,839 square feet. There is 5,841 square feet existing, and the proposed increase is just shy of the allowable 1,000 square feet of 998 square feet is the proposed increase. If you look at the statistics within the area, the proposed impervious area is comparable to other properties that are similarly situated. You see in the staff report, there are some charts and graphs which actually explain where this property falls with regards to properties in the vicinity. The proposed location of the pool is, as we just heard, behind the existing retaining wall and in there, which is already disturbed land and is the only possible location which a pool could be put on this property. The proposed limits of clearing and grading, which is shown on the plan, would be necessary if the pool is approved for construction. There's an assumption made here with regards to those limits of clearing and grading. And that assumption is that the existing retaining wall is in good condition. We have no information to actually support the condition of the retaining wall. The wall is present on the property. We didn't find a permit for the existing wall. And so, as we would move forward with this, we would need to have a grading plan providing supporting information for the condition of the wall and the fact that the wall is able to support what's there now and then any proposed loading from the proposed pool. Next slide, please. The second required finding, the granting of exception will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied by this part to other property owners who are subject to its provisions and are similarly situated. As already noted, there are four cases which are in some way related, but they would not be deemed to be precedent-setting or similar in any way that would set a precedent. And they're listed here, Woody Glen, Peacock Station, Bryan Estates, and Collier Residence. That information is in the staff report for anybody who wishes to look at that more carefully. But they really are not precedent-setting cases. They're just there because they're pools. Next slide, please. The next required finding, that the exception is in harmony with the purpose and intent of this chapter and is not a substantial detriment to water quality. This is why the staff recommendations have approval, or recommended approval conditions. The applicant should be restoring the area on the opposite side of the stream to the condition that it was prior to the RPA or when the RPA was designated on the lot before they start to consider any of that area as mitigation planting. As we've already discussed, it's very difficult to ascertain exactly what that condition was, except for noting, obviously, the aerial imagery, the existence of the sanitary line on the opposite side of the stream prior to the reconstruction of a new house. And the reconstruction of the new house, the limits of disturbance shown on that grading plan did not actually encroach onto the opposite side of the stream. One might surmise that the sanitary line on the opposite side of the stream was the only encroachment. Planter boxes are proposed to be provided such that there isn't a detriment to water quality. The sizing of those planter boxes would be shown on a future grading plan as would be the water quality computations. And staff, just as a note, the reason that you do not see any best management practices already on this property, despite the size of the house, was because at the time the house was constructed, it wasn't uncommon that in such situations, which were close to to water bodies, and it was difficult to actually physically put in best management practices, that those were actually waived. Next slide, please. The exception request is not based on conditions or circumstances that are self-created or self-imposed. Exception is not self-created. Obviously, you can ask for an exception. The lot was recorded in 1947. It's an existing lot. The present house was built in 1998 before the RPA was designated. And the impervious area on the lot is not uncharacteristic for the area. There are other properties in the area that have swimming pools, as has just been raised. The Collier Residence, which actually is on the backside of this property, does have a swimming pool. The difference with this lot is that the stream runs almost through the middle of the lot. Next slide, please. Usable and appropriate conditions are imposed as warranted that prevent the allowed activity from causing a degradation of water quality. Depending on staff, that that planter box, which is proposed, is an acceptable best management practice. Obviously, we have mentioned that the need for a grading plan, particularly for the retaining wall, and then also the design of the planter boxes would actually be included on that grading plan. And so, the sizing of those planter boxes can be adjusted such that the computations show that there isn't a degradation of water quality. The area on the opposite side of the stream, as already mentioned, that should be restored as it would be expected to be when the lot was designated as RPA. And we've already mentioned here, the water quality computations to be submitted with a future grading plan. Next slide, please. Other findings. You look at the DQ or the DCR guidance for exceptions. Some of these other things are noted. The property was acquired in good faith. The subject lot differs from the other lots within 500 feet, as we've mentioned, that the stream runs through the center. The prior designation of the RPA and the retaining wall being constructed for the house and the proposed improvement is going to be inside that area, which is already disturbed. And it's the only usable area of the yard. The RPA policy statements, which the committee should be aware of, and I believe are also posted on the website here, with a case. If they're not, they're posted on the county website. Regardless, they do recognize the sensitiveness or the sensitivity of the seaward or the inner 50 feet of the RPA. However, this is the reason that the case comes to the exception review committee to request encroachment into the seaward 50 feet, in addition to the fact that it's also an accessory structure. Next slide, I believe that's the required findings. The position of the director. The director is recommending that, subject to the recommended approval conditions, which are attachment A, that the pool does qualify for an exception under 1868B. Staff is recommending approval of this exception request, subject to the approval conditions. If you'd like more information on the water quality impact assessment, that's attachment C5. Staff has just noted here, they are not part of this exception request. A separate application will be required. But the other uses, the footbridge and uncommitted uses in the floodplain, those should be submitted as a separate application to have those uses in the floodplain permitted. End up committed. Next slide, please. I think I'll refer you just to attachment A, which is posted on the website. I think that's better for reading, missioning forward, the committee considered the case.
Does the applicant want to rebut anything that the county staff is recommending here?
Only clarify, maybe. So, we're going down the list. We appreciate the discussion associated with all that stuff. Yeah, indicating it's reasonable, it's a reasonable application that no special privileges. We sort of touched on the retaining wall with the infill plan that'll go in. We'll demonstrate that the retaining wall is not impacted by the pool. So, we're kind of on the same page there. The only thing that really is even partially a deviation is the RPA restoration and whether we count it as mitigation, whether the staff wants to count it as mitigation or whether it's just something that's going to happen. Either way, the reforestation is proposed. And again, we don't know, just being out there, you could, there was, one of the large trees that was down was rotted out at the base. So, I mean, again, that's not something I really want to dispute that much because we are proposing that restoration. So, along those lines, I don't think there's too much of a deviation as far as how we do it. The director can approve and the ERC can approve reforestation less than a one-to-one, depending on the scenario. It's not a, you know, San Diego set thing that you can't. If there is not sufficient room to reforest a full area, then in cases like that, you can come up with alternatives, which we are proposing, that planter box and conversion of the lawn to, some of the lawn to a shrub, to native shrubbed areas. The other part would be the inner 50-foot that they're talking about. Yes, it is a sensitive area and it is a contentious area as far as my experience with RPA permitting has been. But it is, it's actually, it is allowed, and it's not actually put into the accessory structures as one of the criteria. If this were a loss of buildable area, it changes between a waiver and an exception over, depending on whether or not you get into the inner 50 feet. So, and it's also important to note that is, the inner 50 feet right now is currently a maintained lawn. So, and has been for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And does the staff have anything to add to that? I think. All right.
I don't think you want to add.
So, now, it's time for the ERC members to ask questions and to speak up about, you know, their thoughts on this application. And if you would, please do raise your hands. I see two are up already. I'm going to recognize Ken Lanfair.
Yeah, I have one thing to clarify. The sanitary sewer easement existed before The um sanitary sewer easement existed before the RPA. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I thought it would, but I just wanted to clarify that. So therefore, the request to restore as it was when the RPA was designated already included the uh sanitary sewer easement. So we're talking of the area further away from the creek than that sanitary sewer. Correct?
I would defer to Camlin for exactly the areas that she was talking about, but generally speaking, it's running right through the middle there, so.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make, just wanted to make sure we're all on the right page there. I, I still am utterly shocked that they would put electrical stuff in the floodplain, but that is not what we're here to debate. So I will let the staff handle that on their own after this. That's basically all I have to say.
Okay, let me call on Sue. Sue Schuman, I believe.
Yes, thank you. I did have questions about why we could not remove that electric lighting to the above ground and under, but that staff will address. My question's simple, where is that pool water going to be discharged?
Pool, pool water will be discharged uh to the stream uh when, when the pool is drained. There, there's a policy that Camlin has in her staff report about what the requirements are for that. But it's not going to be discharged in a situation where um it's going to adversely affect the flow or cause flooding. It's just, it's, you're talking about a little discharge point and a hundred acre drainage area, so.
But it's a large pool when you do drain it. That's one of my questions. The other one is, I'm looking at the plan. Since the Fairfax County requires that pools must be fenced. Did you take that into account in that fact? We are looking at, where would the fence be? It would pretty much be right on top of the retaining, am I correct?
That's. Maybe if I could speak up higher, John Zaka, the the homeowner. I introduced my wife, Lindsay, and the real party and interest, our son, Michael. The Fairfax County rules actually allow a cover instead of a fence, so we would have a pool, retractable pool cover, an automatic pool cover.
Okay, that that was part of my concern, because I've had raccoons and other things.
Yeah, yeah, you know, with leaves and all that, it's often easier just to have a cover.
Sure. And just one other question that's not exactly related, but the large generator there, is your personal generator that the name?
I'm sorry, yes, the, the, uh, at some point in time, we believe it was because of elderly people. An elevator was put in the house, it wasn't us. But the generator is a requirement in order to have an elevator to ensure that people are not stuck.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, let me call on Mary Smith.
Yeah, the staff report says that excess material, when you're working the site, which is going to be for six to nine months, so it's a long time. It's going to be hauled off site. Is that going to be daily? Is any gonna, any, anything gonna sit there for a few days, at which point maybe needs to be covered?
No, I mean, Ted's still, Ted's gonna work on the, Ted Brit with Tri-Tech is is going to be preparing the final plans. But um per the ENS regulations, you can't leave stuff either, you either have to stabilize it or not. But there, it's still going to be just an excavation, that material will be taken off as it's excavated, I would think. Ted, do you have anything to add? You're muted.
Yes, yeah, no, I just, yes, I would, I would agree with that, JT. Yeah, the site is so small and constrained. I think as the pool is excavated, it would be, the the excess material would be removed from the site.
Okay, Barbara Ryan, you have a question or comment?
Hi, uh, yes, I I have questions about two aspects of the application. Uh, the first is the retaining wall. So I'm just a little bit unclear uh on what is actually known at this point in time about the integrity and stability of the retaining wall. And um it sounds as though uh there'll be a um maybe a structural engineer study at the time that the design is complete, but that's down the road. So what happens if it's found that the wall is not able to support the pool? That's my first question. I have another question about the planter box. And whether it is um. Are there any special requirements about BMPs that are put in RPAs? Because it is my understanding that it's generally frowned upon to put BMPs in RPAs for a variety of water quality issues. So what considerations have been put in place to address that? Those are my two questions. Thanks.
Okay, so with respect to, with respect to the wall and the existing sites, we don't have any existing studies on the wall yet. Or at this point. But uh, you know, observation of the wall indicates that it's not cracked, it's not failing anywhere. And the pool is going to be designed in such a way as that it does not exert force on the wall. So it'll, it'll have, it'll, it'll support itself without putting additional pressure on the wall. So in that respect, the existing condition is that, you know, the wall is what it's going to be.
Can I ask?
Yeah. Not the technical expert, but we did talk to the pool person just in anticipation of the question. It's a helical pier structure, so it's basically designed to be free weight bearing, and it does not rely on the retaining wall.
Thanks, uh, just a related question, which is even if the pool itself does not require the support of the retaining wall, what if the construction of the pool adversely affects the stability of the retaining wall? Because um unless I'm mistaken, the limit of disturbance, you know, if the retaining wall needs to be replaced, won't that affect the limit of disturbance?
I, we're, we're really talking about a hypothetical down the road there, and I understand that's that you're you're exploring that. We do have a bit of room around the wall. However, with that being said, I, Ted, do you want to weigh in on that comment?
Sure, again, I think uh prior, you know, as part of the infill grading plan that will have to follow for the pool uh construction. I would anticipate that uh that are, that us, along with the pool designer and along with the landscape company, will do some additional borings um adjacent to the wall to make sure we understand how it was built, what the footing foundation considerations are for it. And if there's any additional sheeting or shoring that would need to happen adjacent to the wall, between the wall and the pool, that we would incorporate that, or they would incorporate that within the design. Um, I think certainly we all recognize that the wall kind of creates that limit that we're gonna work within, and we want to make sure that we respect the integrity of the wall and make sure that nothing happens during construction. So I think there will be some extra measures taken to ensure that that's the case. And the pool contractor and the landscape company that the Zekas have been talking to are highly regarded uh companies uh in their field. So I feel confident that we'll be able to protect the wall as part of this construction.
Thank you. And the planter box question.
Yeah, and with. Yep. Yep, and yeah, with respect to the the BMP in the, in the RPA, with the orientation and the way that this project is, there's really no feasible way to put it outside the RPA and not have more disturbance as far as taking it out and piping things back in. You're, you're treating, you're treating impervious area that is within the RPA. And it is, again, it's a planter box, so as the infill plan gets processed, they'll, it'll have, they'll during the process, they'll have to work out the maintenance and uh whatever agreement language will be for for maintaining and ensuring that it stays on. Typically, I mean, typically in a situation like this, I I don't know that there's a way not to put it in the RPA.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now Ed Monroe has a question or comment?
Right, so um I had a question or or comment rather regarding the discharge of the pool water. I'm looking at the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality guidelines, and they offer two solutions to discharge of pool water, disposal directly to the sanitary sewer, which I, I, I think I heard mentioned that that's not going to be the case here. So the other option is the release of the pool water to a well vegetated area. So um could you explain further, uh, Mr. Kelly, uh, you know, how that's going to be managed? Because uh, of course, we all realize there's limited space for for this uh project to go, go forward in.
Yeah, again, the, the, you know, it's a situation where this, with the pool is literally within twenty feet of the resource. So as far as the well vegetated area, um it, you're, you don't, it's not, it doesn't exist. So, but I, we are gonna have to discharge it in accordance with the regulations. And the reforestation that's proposed is on the other side, but it will be on the backside of the wall. It's, it's a natural revegetation on the, on the backside of the wall. Ted, do you have anything to add on that?
Uh, the only, the only thing that I would add was and I don't know that we have done this in the past for pool discharges, discharging to the sanitary sewer system. So I don't necessarily know whether Public Works would entertain that or not, but that could be something that we could explore, but also then that has, you know, the potential for um you know, additional uh disturbance in the R, in the RBA. Yet I also, we have a sewer lateral that, for the house itself, that we could possibly tie into. So that may be an option to do that. But we'll certainly work with staff uh to make sure that whatever path is chosen, that it's in accordance with the DEQ regulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Anne Cantor has a question or comment? Anne, you want to unmute yourself?
Again, okay, when I talked to John Kelly or whoever it was that was there last, last week, we talked about if there was some sort of uh grasses or such, something that can be planted over the sanitary sewer. I know you cannot put trees in, but is there some sort of um vegetative covering that can be put over sanitary sewers? We're kind of gonna try to kind of look in on that. Do you have any more information on that?
Yeah, I, we do have a, we have a native riparian seed mix proposed for the reforestation areas. So it would be just a matter of applying that and over top of the easement area.
Okay.
I don't think that would be a problem.
Yeah, the other question is about how deep, is this gonna be a a plunge pool? Is it going to be a kind of a averaging out at four feet? Because if you average out at four feet, you've got, I was doing some quicks. It's about twenty thousand gallons of water. And so I, I don't know when you said that the, the drainage water is just going to be a trickle. I mean, um, the pool could easily have twenty thousand gallons of water in it that you have to ten thousand, you know, of which you have to discharge at some time. So I think that's, that's a bigger number than you kind of were implying. And I, I just have a question, is is this a pool that's gonna be brought in with a big crane and lifted over the house? Or is this gonna be a gunite pool? Or how, how, how it is a pool constructed back? Because if it's gunite, there's gonna be cement trucks someplace or other.
Okay, with respect, with respect to the discharge of the, of the total volume, it, regardless of the total volume, it's how fast you let it out on the pipe. The head, the head will force water out at a certain rate, and um the DQ probably has guidelines on what it can be. So it's gonna, it will conform with the DEQ guidelines regarding concentrations and discharge rate. We can, we can also run some quick calculations to see how fast the discharge would be relative to what the stream flow is. That's really, that's not usually a big deal. The other thing with respect to the uh type of the pool, I'm gonna defer to Ted on that.
And and I may defer to John, but my understanding is that it, I believe it's proposed to be a gunite pool.
And. Yeah, I, I, just on the, on the cement piece, you know, there is a driveway nearby. So I think the expectation would be, it's not like we're taking cement trucks into the backyard. They would remain on the driveway, and then it would be pumped through a, through a sluice or whatever you call it, uh, to the spot. It's only about twenty feet away.
That's what I was gonna say as well, yeah, I would anticipate that they'd have a pump truck that would be staged in the driveway to be able to to gunite the pool.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a question from Sam Govender. Sam, you want to unmute yourself?
Oh, right. Yeah, has a flood elevation ever been taken on that area? Because it seems like the retaining wall is there to keep floodwaters out of this property. The stream being right up against, you could say, almost against the wall. Uh, it is of concern to me that, you know, we are already in the floodplain, and the measurement of the fifty-foot line is not quite true.
Ted, were there any historic floodplains done? It's, it's the drainage area, the stream's only a hundred acres, so it's a minor floodplain. I'm not aware of a floodplain study being done.
I will just say that it's a high elevation to the house. The principal purpose of the retaining wall, which I think has been in existence, and and Tom can comment on this for, in some form for decades, was primarily to create a flat backyard and also to retain the prior pool that was there. So it is not, it is not uh related to preventing floods. The, the stream is at least uh twenty feet down from that spot and also over. So uh it is not in the, the house itself is not in the floodplain.
Yeah, look, looking at the map, it looks like the entire, you know, that, that backyard has been filled into the stream valley area, as I'd call it. And none of the areas around it has that. So we've got this, what looks like a gentle slope going down from adjacent sites. And this one uh creates a steep embankment uh near the stream. The stream is, you know, with the pool going in there, there, there won't be any more of a buffer area left.
Well, just to be clear, the, the retaining wall has, you know, predated the RPA and was there for years. So the structure and the impact on the stream is always as it was. I think what we're saying is by taking the impervious area, including the planter box, we are actually improving what is now a poor drainage area in a rapid runoff.
You, you, you know, the, the improvement is only temporarily, you know, based on this small area that you're disturbing. You can't make it any worse, I suppose, but the idea is to improve matters within the floodplain, not keep it the same or make it worse.
I think we are in agreement, and I think that's why with the reforestation and the uh planter boxes, we believe we're doing that. It, it will be better than it is now.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not aware of a, I'm not aware of a floodplain study that has been done through there, but the elevation of the toe of the wall is approximately six feet above the channel of the stream, and there's a broad area on the other side of the stream. So I would be very surprised if the floodplain actually comes up to the wall. I think it probably is in between the wall and the uh, and the channel.
I have a question that I would like to ask.
And this is coming in now, staff, I, I'd just like to um to point something out. If you look at the grading plan for the existing house, you'll actually see that the floodplain elevation is shown on that. The grading plan is very difficult to read, but you will see that the flood is actually noted. Um, we'd have to look more carefully to see which computations were provided. So there's something shown there. And I guess the other thing that I would like to um remind everyone of, and that is that the hearing is for chapter one eighteen. And the items which are in the floodplain, those are subject to the zoning ordinance, which is um a separate process um that would need to, to, to go, be gone through. Obviously, the retaining wall that's there now is obviously approved at the time that the house was actually constructed.
You're saying it was approved at the time the house was constructed? You're saying it was approved at the time the house was constructed? You're muted, Cam. Cameron, you're muted.
If, if you look at the grading plan, um, I forget which attachment it is. I can tell you in just a moment. Um, you want to look at.
The big plan that we got in the mail?
Um, it's, it's attachment C eight, something. Just bear with me and I'll tell you exactly which one to look at. If you look at attachment C eight four. So C eight four is the, the grading plan when the, the new house was constructed and you'll see the 100-year water surface elevation shown on that.
That's the big map that we got in the mail, members?
No, that's attachment C eight four. It's in the staff report. It's a, um, a smaller exhibit, but obviously you can have the larger exhibit, but it was actually included. Yes, thank you, Nicola. If you zoom in on that, um, where the, the retaining wall is, is actually shown there, you should see that the, um, there's a 100-year water surface elevation shown and whether it's on this sheet or whether it's on, um, another sheet.
You're gonna have to zoom in a lot more than that.
Okay, you can see there, if you look where you've got contour line, um, two, um, two, is that 208 there or two? No, it's 200. It's difficult to see there. 210, 208. So you see the 100-year water surface elevation shown, um, on the, um, the opposite side of the stream. But then obviously you'll, you'll see if you look the same line, you'll see it's adjacent to the, to the retaining wall.
It, it seems to be coming right up against the retaining wall on that.
Yes. Is, is, is it, is it, this is Ann Cantor. Is it the, uh, it's a long line and then there's three dots and then there's a long line and then three dots?
That's correct. Yeah. So, so you look at a 28 on the opposite side and then the one towards the house. You can follow that line. That's the flood, floodplain elevation.
That, it, see, it runs, oh, let's see. Yeah. It runs along the edge of the stream, actually goes into that black kind of lobby area. It's a little bit off the toe.
I believe if you look at the, the maker's mark on it, it's from 1992. Uh, I think, I just, I'm not looking at it anymore, but it's down bottom right, which would have put it before the soil report and before the waiver of water quality requirements. Yeah, right there. 94, 94. So it would have been part of the building permit for the new house. That's when that grading plan was put in. 1228, that's right. That's when the new house was built. So it was part of the grading plan. It's shown there then. I don't know if it existed prior to that, but it's shown there at that point.
If you look on the existing conditions plan, which is also part of this attachment C eight, you'll see what was there before.
That's what
David, did you have a question or a comment you wanted to make?
I said, isn't that what we're looking at that you just had up with C eight?
You were looking at proposed conditions that, um, exhibit C eight also. C eight four had the existing conditions. There's another sheet in that as well. Should be a second sheet.
Are we done with this discussion? I have a question. Or are we looking for the second sheet?
I noticed a retaining wall drawing there as well. Now, maybe, maybe it's the wrong one.
But there were some things for the retaining wall, but there weren't complete calculations and neither was because of the height of the wall, there would have been a separate permit for that, but we didn't have any of that information. We looked in the records, that wasn't found. So that's why we would need to have that now.
Well, the, the C eight four shows the retaining wall as requiring a separate permit. So it is my understanding that C eight four reflects intent not existing.
I'm not quite sure what you mean by intent. Obviously, the, the grading plan was approved. And so the, the approval to put the wall was there, but the design of the wall needed a separate permit.
Since when do you get a permit after you've built it?
Well, you get the grading plan approved to build a new house and it shows the location of the wall. But you need to have a separate permit where it's reviewed by the building plan review engineers who actually look at the structural integrity of the wall. The wall would have to have footings and potentially reinforcement loading calculations, et cetera, to show that it would actually carry any, any load. That's the exhibit there, which actually is showing the, um, the situation prior to the construction of the new house. So I guess you can see that, um, 100-year water surface elevation being shown there down at, um, I'm trying to take elevation 206, 207. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's way down the stream, actually. So, so you need to be looking at
Cross section BB. Yeah, cross section BB on the left-hand side there. It's hard to see. It looks like that that's, um,
That's the 208. Yeah. So that's my guess.
And so you can use those elevations there to actually see the impact of the wall potentially on the floodplain.
Um, have we finished with your question? Or comment?
Talking to me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think I'm done for now.
Okay. I have a question, which is, um, and your planting plan, this is for the applicant, for Mr. Kelly. In your planting plan, you don't show what happens on the reverse the, the embankment that is right next to the pool. It's kind of behind the wall. And I was wondering if you could put up a picture of that area. And I was wondering what happens with that? Is it going to be replanted or?
Talking about the backside between the wall and the, uh, the backside between the wall and the stream?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it'll, it'll be revegetated, um, with herbaceous material. Um, but that, that'll be on the infill plan within the LOD. So it's, you're gonna, you, you have to stabilize it and seed it, but you would not plant trees or anything on that, on that slope.
Right.
For wall stability and for the fact that if they fall, they pop it, they pop that stuff. It's just a little wedge of soil down there. So, um, but I believe this is, most of this is actually growing on its own a lot because, um, I've seen other photos at different times that where this stuff was, was, you know, died off and then we went there the other day and it's bushy as heck. So, yeah.
Okay, so, so is that going to also be replanted with native plantings? Not?
Yes, yes.
All right. And are there any concerns about the stability of that little wedge of soil? It's kind of steep.
No. It, no, because, I mean, it's stable now. It's been stable for years and years. There's no, there's no reason to think that, you know, that it won't be.
I still, I see two hands up. Mary Smith, did you have another question or is your, is your hand up from before?
Sorry, I, I meant to lower my hand.
Okay, and Barbara Ryan, same for you. Did you have a question or a comment?
Oh, thanks, Betsy. It's just a follow-up actually to your question, just to clarify. So as we look at this picture um, on either side of the stream, I was there the other day and it's a very thick planting of, of Japanese pachysandra, which doesn't go away on its own. It's, it's, it's actually fairly, it's an invasive plant. I would like to just clarify that in the reforestation, that that will be removed and replaced with native vegetation.
Well, yeah, maybe I, I could speak to that. I mean, I, I think we obviously want to do, uh, what is required and expected and in replanting, I know that there is an expectation of use of native plants where possible. Um, you know, the core here is frankly, water quality. Uh, so I guess the question is, is the removal of pachysandra and the disturbance of the ground worth it with respect to the water quality? But I don't think if, if that's the limit of the context of the area of concern, I think we can think about removing the, the pachysandra, but it will have an impact on soil stability. That's just a reality.
Okay. Now, do we have any other questions? From the committee members? I think we, we have now closed the, we're now having the discussion among the committees, so I'm not. Amy Gould has a question. Amy, did you want to ask her?
Yeah, just, I'm sorry. I, I have to unmute my microphone as well as the computer, so I apologize. Um, yeah, I, I'm just really hung up on the pool, um, draining into the, into the water. I just, I'm having a little trouble with that one. Um, and I, I know that we all want to put that decision off and explore later, but I, I'm, I'm going to have trouble making a decision without a definitive answer on that. I don't want to see any chlorinated water going into a brook that's already, has its issues. And, um, so I, I, I'm very uncomfortable with that. And, um, so that's, that's one of the, the areas that I'm, that I'm really having, struggling with. The other is just the general question of this being within the 50-foot seaward. I'm just having, that's an obstacle for me to look at all these other wonderful things that are going to be done. In conjunction with this, I'm still having that hurdle that I'm having a little trouble, um, justifying this pool. Um, so that's just where I am right now. And I, you know, if anybody can address that, that's fine. If not, that, you know, I can't, I know these answers aren't going to come till later. We're expected to make a decision based on something we don't have full information on. And I have a little trouble with that. So um, that's kind of where I'm struggling with right now.
Well, maybe, maybe I can start out and JT and others can weigh in. Um, you know, I, I think obviously we want to do this in a way that's consistent with law. I think that's your obligation as well. Uh, we would not do something that is outside the requirement, a requirement that doesn't exist cannot be applied to us. If there are allowances and ways that you handle runoff, then that is the law. And so while we are certainly, you know, if, if there is a reasonable sewer route, we're happy to do that. But the, you know, this, where the county allows certain things, I mean, to be frank, that can't be ignored here.
Okay, so, right, you, you're, you're right, Mr. Zekka. I appreciate that, where you're coming from on that. My, my issue is our focus is water quality. And if you're putting chlorinated water into a a water runoff area within the 50-foot seaward, that kind of falls in our purview. So I completely respect what you're saying about you're going to try to do whatever you can within the law. And I totally respect that. But my concern is somebody that sits on this committee is the water quality. So when I see somebody dumping a pool in there, that, that's going to bother me. So, um, that's just my personal feeling. So, thank you.
Okay, I see that. Thank you, Amy. David Schnair has a comment or a question? David, you had your hand up. Did you want to say something?
He's muted.
I'm sorry, I, I failed to unmute myself. The issue of chlorinated water has come up before, uh, this, this group, this committee. Uh, we've dealt with it before. Discharge water must be dechlorinated before it's discharged. There's a standard approach to do it. Uh, that is not, chlorine into the water is not an issue from the swimming pool. The volume, uh, and the discharge rate, it has to be appropriate to the stream bed. Uh, and I believe that's the standard calculation that's done as well. That's not to say that I am supportive of this, uh, application, but I do want to make sure the record is clear.
Thank you.
All right. Um, and I guess we have one, a last comment from Barbara Ryan.
Hi, uh, yeah, I, I, I am sympathetic, um, to the concerns expressed about the water discharge. I also respect the fact that it's allowed and that there are rigid requirements there, which I would certainly hope would be adhered to down the road. My concern is the retaining wall and I have a similar kind of concern about, um, about ta- taking up this matter when there's much that we don't know about the integrity of the retaining wall. And it, and, and what is the recourse if this is approved and it is later found that the retaining wall needs to be replaced and that that could affect water quality because the construction would certainly uh, go further down towards the stream. So I just, that's, that's my comment. That's my reservation.
Okay. Somebody want to say something?
No, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to or not. So.
JT, okay, go ahead quickly.
All I was going to say is that the limits of, the limits of disturbance for this, um, do extend to the downstream or the, I guess, the stream side edge of the retaining wall. Um, the retaining wall is a non-conforming use in the RPA. Therefore, it is able to be maintained and, uh, repaired without, it's exempt. Okay, so if there was an issue with the retaining wall, you do have the ability as a non-conforming use to fix it. I'm not saying that there is, and I'm saying actually that there isn't going to be, but regarding the concern that there, this is obviously a concern. If there's an issue with the retaining wall, you can fix it and you can, you can fix it regardless of what happens to it. Tree falls on it, anything like that. You can go back and put it back the way that it was. Cannot expand or enhance it, but you can put it back.
Yeah, and, and, and I appreciate that. My concern is that, um, the process of fixing it will have a bit greater impact on water quality than what we are currently looking at with the pool proposal.
Okay, now I'd like to close the
One more question there. Based, based on the last, sorry, I have one more question. The, correct me if I'm wrong. It sounds like we're going to have our limits of disturbance on the downstream side of the retaining wall? Or we're going to have your, all your, uh, ENS protection on the inside of the retaining wall?
Right now, Ted, right now, as I, as we have it on there, it's the face, the downstream face of the retaining wall, correct?
So you're going to disturb the vegetation on that side to put a silt fence?
Actually, JT, we were, we were thinking that it, it would be on top of the retaining wall.
On top, okay.
Yeah. So it'd be on the house side of the retaining wall, not the downstream.
Okay. We're talking about teeny tiny lines on plans that, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I've seen that happen quite a few places. You're going to disturb perfectly good areas to put a silt fence in. And you create a problem on its own. All right, I think I'm done for now. Thank you.
Okay. And David, I see your hand raised. Did you have one last comment or question before we close the question phase?
I move the, I move the, uh, public hearing be closed and we move on to the motion that, of course.
All right. Well, I was just about to close the, the presentations.
Requires, requires a motion.
It will get a motion, but actually our procedures call us to first discuss among ourselves and then the chair calls for a motion.
No, no, the public hearing portion requires a motion to close.
Yes, okay.
Okay, and that's why I've moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so, um, I'd be interested to hear people people's take on this and where they're coming down on it before we introduce a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a mention about the pool water dis-
Yeah, I'd like to make a mention about the pool water discharge.
Yeah.
So I, I keep looking at this. And I've mentioned that there's, there's two categories under the guidelines. The, the water goes directly into a sanitary sewer, and that's likely the preferred method. Or we release the water to a well vegetated area on the property. I don't see that that's possible in this case. You know, so this kind of puts, this, this, puts this particular project discharging directly into the water. Now, if you read the text, it says that direct discharges are discouraged and should only be considered as a last resort for pool water disposal. So if we're in agreement that that is in fact the last resort without having considered, we're taking a look at other options, then we might vote in approval for this project. But if, if we're not in agreement that we haven't gotten all the information about perhaps tying into the sanitary sewer, then we ought to consider another option.
Well, they can also have the option of trucking it out. That's also mentioned in those guidelines. Ken Lanfair would like to speak. I recognize Ken Lanfair.
Oh, yeah, I kind of, kind of agree with Ed. Seems like the rule is pretty clear. I, I, I don't really see how you would be able to discharge to that stream. And besides, you've got a sanitary sewer connection right in the house. I mean, and that somewhere between the house and that sewer, there's got to be a connection line. I, I, it's, I, I don't have the plans for the house, but I'm pretty sure that's the case. So I don't see why we can avoid discharging to the sanitary sewer. It sounds like a perfectly good application. It might require a pump, certainly a check valve, but it can be done. So I would say I think we ought to approve it with the understanding that it would be connected to the discharge, would be connected to the sanitary sewer. Or, or trucked out to a sanitary sewer, which is done in that area. There's, there's connections up at difficult run, for example, where trucks routinely take sewage and, and dump it from septic tanks. That would be unusual, but they got a sewer right there. What's the problem?
Right. They have an easement. There's a big sewer going right through there.
Well, I'm not suggesting they connect to the big sewer. That's another matter altogether. And I'm sure Fairfax Public Works would have something to say about it. But we almost certainly have a residential connection to that sewer that the pool could be tied into the residential connection.
Yeah, and any direct connection to the public sewer will create a disturbance of the stream, and I don't recommend that.
Yeah, and, and like I said, where they already have a residential connection, I wouldn't be, have you actually checked, let me ask, that the, the residential connection from the house to the sewer? Well, I guess because you already had a pool there earlier, you probably wouldn't have put it where the pool is going. I mean, it would be ironic if you had to move the residential connection to fit the pool in. I assume you've already checked that.
We, we don't know for sure if there was a pool. It's just somebody's recollection of a pool in that area. It could have been the neighbor's house as well.
But I'm talking to two engineers here. And you're going to dig into the ground and you don't know where the sewer connection is? I'm, I'm, surely you looked at that. Can I, can I ask that question?
No.
Yes.
JT?
No, it's closed.
Yeah, we've closed it. I'm afraid we took a vote.
Well, I'm going to grant, I'm going to grant them the benefit of the doubt. They're both professional engineers and they, I'm sure they know where the connection is and should connect to it.
Okay, David has his hand up.
Thank you. I, I'm going to just tell you where I'm at on this. I believe that this fails 6B requirement that it confers special privileges denied in similar situations. In cases where we're talking about putting a pool on the seaward 50 feet, we don't do it. We just have never done that. Outside the 50-foot mark, we've done it with, with a lot of conditions. But we don't do it inside the 50-foot mark. Furthermore, it is my view that this, the circumstances are self-created. The house was purchased well after the RPA was put in place. The purchaser has the opportunity and responsibility of determining whether all the amenities that are desirable in the house he's about to purchase are available. It's, and this is a self-created situation to, to my mind. And that is, based on those two things, I will not be able to vote in favor of this application.
Okay. Mary Smith, you wanted to speak?
Well, David, I respectfully disagree. That way, we would never be in this situation because everybody buys their property as is, you're saying. And therefore, they shouldn't be able to put anything on it. Well, that negates all the other exceptions that I, and I'm new. So I may be speaking out of turn that we've approved.
No, if, if they're putting in a house, for example, or putting in certain types of structures that are very small, but in particular, and we've had this case come forward where they wanted to put in a house where it's, it's just an addition to the house, it's not connected directly to the house. We have approved those because they were the reasonable in the context of the use of the, of the facility here. This is an amenity value, and we just, we have not done it in the past. If this committee wishes at a majority vote to do so, certainly free to do so. But I'm, I'm the strict private property conservative on this committee. And I have thought long and hard about wanting to make sure that the homeowner has every opportunity should to do what they want. But this is simply too far afield from what the purposes of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance are, are going to permit. So we, we have and will continue to offer relief inside the 50-foot mark, but it has to be of special need where there is simply no other way to provide for a residential opportunity. Here, the residence is there, the residence is, is a working home. But this is not necessary for a residence, and it's not a taking. And it's simply not in accord, into my mind, with proper use of, of the land that close to a spin bed.
Okay. Now, I had planned, my plan was to recognize Ed Monroe to introduce a motion and, and also to display it at the same time that he's reading it. We have, we must read a motion because it has to be presented orally as well as on the screen. And my computer is telling me that I cannot share. So I'm wondering if Brandy or Nicola can share the version that Ed Monroe is going to read?
Yes, we can. Give us one second to pull that up.
And while you're doing that, let me explain that this, what Ed is going to bring up is really a pretty bare bones resolution. It's mostly our template. And my intention was that we use it to discuss and refine and modify what's there and to come to, to a decision. And what I'd like to do is to go through each of the findings, one by one, and discuss them and vote on them one piece at a time and, and come up with a decision that way. If anybody has any alternative way of doing that, I'd be glad to hear it. But it's not easy to do this online, and I hope this might work.
Betsy, could I ask, what is the, I, I understand we have the, the draft language for the proposal, but then there's the proposed exceptions, conditions, and how's that going to fit with this other document?
This would be, we would follow up. We, obviously, we would not be talking about conditions if we deny it or defer it. And so this is a motion to.
So, so Betsy, I think, I think we're at a different place now based on what folks are saying to use this directly. So I could read it, but, you know, this is for approval. And from what I'm hearing from members of the committee, I don't, I don't fully hear approval.
No, I don't, I don't know which way we're going to go. I hear some strong votes for not approval, and I heard some.
So I can, I can make a motion to defer and cite the reason why.
No, I think, I think what you should do is make a motion to approve, and then we will amend it. We'll discuss each of these conditions and we will decide, A, is this the minimum necessary to afford relief? And do we, now, hey, Nicola and Brandy, the way this was sent, it was in, it was in markup mode. And that will enable us to edit it as we go along and to see that there are options. Because approval with conditions is one option, deny is another, and defer is another.
Do you want us to pull up? Sorry.
And the way it works is if we vote it down, then we just bring up a different motion.
Right.
Yes, Betsy, do you want us to bring up the newly revised template that you just approved earlier, which has the options? So that as you discuss it.
Well, this one has them too. This one also does. You just have to put it in.
This one is written as if it is approved, but we can add them. But someone will, ideally, I don't know if you have access, you will need to request control so you can edit this directly as you discuss it, which was your original intention, right?
That was my original intention, but my, it says I can't, I can't do desktop sharing.
Can Ed request control? Do you have the ability to do so? At the top of your screen, do you have that icon?
Don't see that, actually.
Okay. Then we, we will do our best to type as you go along. If you direct, Nicola's sharing the form. But as I said, this one is written as if it was approved. It does not have the options, so we would have to change it.
It actually is in track changes. So if you change over to track changes mode, you'll see the portions that are deleted. In other words, if you display the.
Yeah, hold on one second. We're doing it now. Go to dropdown.
Yeah.
Hold on.
All markup. There you go. Okay, so as we go along, we can change our, we can change this. This is a provisional, a provisional thing. And I'd like to hear a second so that we begin to discuss this.
So Betsy, just to clarify, I'm going to read through the whole, the whole motion. And then we're going to go back and discuss each of the exception criteria.
That's correct. And before you, before we go discuss, discussing it, we're going to need a second so that it's on the table in front of the committee.
Okay.
What's on the table? Approved, deny, or defer?
What's on the table will be approved with conditions.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so I'm, I'll second. If we have, if we've had the motion, I'll second it.
Okay, but he has, yeah, he has to read it.
I need to read the whole thing. So I'll go ahead. I move that the committee approved with conditions Mr. John Zeca and Ms. Lindsay Noble's exception request to the criteria and requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance under Section 118-6-8. Construct a pole with a spall in the resource protection area. Whereas the application has been properly filed and notice given in accordance with the requirements of all applicable state and county codes. And whereas the committee has made the findings that the exception, the requested exception as condition is the minimum necessary to afford relief. B, granting the exception will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied to other property owners who are similarly situated. C, the exception as condition is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the CBPO and is not of substantial detriment to water quality. D, the exception request is not based upon conditions or circumstances that are self-created or self-imposed. And E, reasonable and appropriate conditions will be imposed that will prevent the allowed activity from causing a degradation in water quality. Therefore, I move that the Exception Review Committee approves both the Water Quality Impact Assessment Number 1996 WQ-005-1 and Exception Request Number 1996-WRPA-016-1 under Section 118-6-8 of the CBPO to permit the approachment into the RPA subject to the conditions recommended in Attachment A.
Thank you, Ed.
Sure.
And now let's go back, and we have David second. And so we can begin discussing, amending this, this motion. And let's start with the first finding, minimum necessary to afford relief. I would like to hear your, your views, your proposals for how it should be modified. Remember to use your, raise hands. We need both to decide whether we think it is or is not the minimum necessary to afford relief, and we need to state the reasons why we reached that conclusion. Okay? Anybody want to start?
I, Betsy, I can follow up with this one.
Oh, okay.
And, and then I see Ann Cantor has her hand raised. The, the applicant in, in the county has made the case that this is the only location for a swimming pool. That there's no other location. I, I did go on site. And there's different uses that could be made of that property. But if the homeowner wishes to put a swimming pool there, that's the only location for it. So there, there's certainly different, different viewpoints on that. But that, that would be the only location where they could put it.
Yep, I think that's true. Ann Cantor, would you like to speak?
That was pretty much the same thing I was going to say. For this condition, I'm just concerning, I mean, I, I am, I agree with Dave on this one. I, 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 you know, we're not going to go into the seaward 50 feet. I'm not going to vote for it. But, and I don't think, you know, I don't think this property needs a swimming pool. So that, but if we approve this, are we setting up legal precedence for denying other ones and then denying it? That's, that's the kind of question I want. But I, but my, my, what I was going to say, just to get us moving along is, yeah, it's, I, it's the only place on the property to put a swimming pool if there's, if there should, if there has to be a swimming pool.
Right.
If we feel there has to be a swimming pool. So I would, I would approve. If we're going to do it, A, B, C, D, I, I would agree with A.
Okay. Perhaps we should take a vote on A, using our raised hands.
If we're going to do this, we're going to be here forever. Yeah, we're going to.
I know.
Yeah.
We are. It's true, and it's getting late already. So if you, if you would all put your hands down, let's take a vote on, I move that we adopt A, as worded, is the minimum necessary to afford relief. And will those in favor of adopting A, raise your hands, please? In favor of A, okay, we have Mary Smith, David Schnair, we have Ann Cantor, Ken, Sue, and Alexis. I believe that's a majority. One, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah, I think it is. And, and Ed. Yeah, I think it is, and, and Ed. All right, and that's because it's the only place to put a pool, am I right? So.
How many are opposed?
All opposed? Put your hands down, and then we'll get the opposed. Well, hands are going up and down, I can't even count. Okay, we have Som, Barbara, and Amy. Okay. So I believe we have agreed that the requested exception is minimum necessary to afford relief. And I can offer some proposed wording for the, for the reasons we would put in there, basically drawing on Cameron's report. Should we do that now, or should we go through and do all of these conditions, and then come back and fill in our reasons? I'd like some guidance from the committee.
Let's go on, because if we defeat any one of them, you don't have to do any of them.
Okay. All right, so B, granting the exception will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied to other property owners who are similarly situated. How many of you are in favor of that, agree, in agreement?
Can we discuss that? I mean, can we, can we put our reasons up?
Yes, yes, please do.
All right, let me just start and simply say that the wooded Glen lot for Section 15255 WRPA 003-1 was denied in the same kind of condition. And because we did not give them a right, and it was similar enough to this case, we would be granting a privilege denied others in similar situations. And for that reason, I believe we should state that granting the exception will confer upon the applicant special privileges denied to other property owners.
Anybody else want to speak on this one?
Yes, I, I do, this is Ken.
Yes.
One thing impresses me on this one is that the pool is going on top of an already maintained grassy area. I don't, I'm not aware of other lots where a grassy area that is basically where you sit and have a picnic was the place where the pool went. Am I not correct in that? I mean, it makes sense to me that replacing a grass with a pool may actually, may actually improve things in some ways.
Okay, well, here we're talking about privilege, not water quality.
Well, I mean, we're looking at other, other places, other cases that have been rejected. But unfortunately, not familiar with those cases to the point where I could say that they also requested to put a pool on an entirely grassy area. Were they knocking down trees to put those other pools in? I don't know, I did not, I'm not familiar with them. I'm willing, enlightened, but I'm not familiar with them.
We, we've had cases where they've put pools in on lawns, we've had them where they've taken trees down. What we have not done is approve one within 50 feet of the stream bed. And that's the privilege that I think is being accorded here that has been denied previously.
But somewhere that grass got within 50 feet of the stream bed.
It has nothing to do with the grass. There are cases where we've had people who have put lawns right up to the edge of the stream bed, which is inappropriate, and we've had them reforest them and put growth in. But we've not had pools within 50 feet of a, of a, a stream bed.
Yes, but on this case, we all recognize that the grass that is there is, is legal. It's, it's not been put in violation, it predated the ordinance. And therefore, they are changing that use of the grass. They're, but again, they are not tearing down trees.
But, but, but they're not, you know, grass is, is pervious, the ground is pervious. It has some value to water quality. What we're talking about here is removing that and altogether putting in a hard physical structure some 21 feet from the, from the pool in a, in a case where you have stream with normal erosion, which over time is going to be even a greater concern and the potential for flooding. I, you can, I cannot equate a pool with the fact that there's, with some grass on the ground.
Well, first of all, two things. First of all, you don't fertilize a pool. Secondly, any water that goes into the pool is at least temporarily captured. So when it's raining, when the high, when you have high flows, the pool is not discharging to the stream, contributing to the flows that cause the most erosion.
That, that may be, but it also doesn't provide for the kind of infiltration into the groundwater that we would like to have around the stream bed.
This is Mary Smith, I, I, I'm a little bit concerned that, how to interpret this language. I know it's in the statute, I know it's in the Virginia guidance and in the regs, so, but what does it really mean? I mean, the staff report basically looked at other cases and said they're not similar to this one, and so kind of brushed it off. My concern is, is that we have basically said that something put within 50 feet of the stream, we're not gonna ever approve. And I, I'm concerned that that's not what the intent of the exception is. If, if it was, if that was the intent, why didn't Virginia give that kind of guidance to us? Why isn't in the Fairfax County regs that says we won't approve anything within 50 feet?
Well, nobody's saying we won't approve anything within 50 feet. The, the staff report states specifically, there are four cases which are similar. And the whole point here is that it was within the 50 feet where it was denied previously. It's not to say that we haven't had stuff within 50 feet, we have. We have had homes within 50 feet that were built. But they were done in such a way that truly did minimize all the other effects, and were the only way we could do it. Let me make it clear, we are not allowed to prevent a landowner from building a home on a property. That's a whole taking, and we can't have that. But where it is incremental, we can use our judgment. And I'm just joining in and saying, our judgment is, in this case, this is a privilege that was denied others previously.
And, and I disagree with that interpretation of that, that it's the same privilege that we're granting here and were denied to others elsewhere. I don't have the information to go on that. I mean, if they wanted to paint their house, would they need an exception? No, of course not.
What does that have to do with this?
Well.
That's, that's not a land disturbance.
Well, but they are disturbing land that is already disturbed, and that disturbance is already permitted. So I think that is a different case.
In other cases, people were trying to build a home where they could not, I mean, there was nothing, nowhere else for them to put it. This one, you have a pool that's not essential. That's my view on it. And you know, the, our motion, A, that we agreed to said that there's no other area to put the pool. If you really wanted to put a pool, you could go for the front yard.
Well, if you have a driveway.
Yeah, that's.
The front yard did not work. It's.
The applicant has, I think they've done a pretty good job of stating that the front will not work because there's a setback limit and so forth. So I wouldn't argue that point. But I hear what, what committee members are saying about special privileges. I'm unsure of context myself.
Does anybody else, Amy, would you like to comment on this one?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just agree that this does, this does convey a special privilege because it looks like we're gonna have to approve. If we approve this one in the 50-foot seaward, we're gonna have to approve every, everyone that comes in because they're gonna use this as the example that we set. So I just, this is my problem, I can't get past this. That's just what my two cents here. Oh, I, I just wanna say one other thing is that when they purchased the property, they probably knew this was an RPA. That's part of the bill, the process of purchasing, just, I happen to know that because I'm a realtor. So, you know, when you know there's an RPA, you know there can be issues with that. And so I, you know, that's just my, my, in case anybody doesn't understand that, thanks.
Well, that's true, I hope, I hope they tell them that it's an RPA. But it's also true that they have a right to request.
There's a residential disclosure that, that specifies that it could be in an RPA, and it is up to the buyer to do their due diligence and investigate that, so.
Now, Ann, Barbara Ryan has her hand up.
Oh, thanks, yeah, I just want to react to the discussion and convey that I, I agree that granting this exception would confer a special privilege. And, and I'm pretty much unsayable on that.
All right, do others want to speak to this issue? Or shall we vote on whether we think it will not confer a special privilege or it will confer a special privilege? Are we ready to have Ken Landfair and Amy Ghul still have their hands up? Would, do you want to speak before we have a vote on this one? Ken, did you want to say something? No. Okay. Using your raised hands feature, how many people believe that granting the exception will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied to other property owners who are similarly situated? Please raise your hand if you agree with that. Okay, we have Mary and Ken. Right. And how many people are opposed and disagree with that? Mary, put down your hand, and others, raise your hand. Amy, Ann, Som, David, Alexis, Barbara, Sue. All right. That's pretty decisive. I think.
Betsy, just for the record, this is Brandy, I also need your vote. I don't think we got it on the last one, so we need to make sure you're counted in either as approved or opposed.
Okay. Well, I think I will abstain and stay, maintain impartiality on these, on this one, so that I can.
I've abstained as well.
Okay, so Ed and I both abstained. All right, so I think what we have here is that this one, two people voted to say it, it, it is not, will not confer a special privilege, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people voted to say it will confer a special privilege. And I think that means, that leads to a denial of the, of the exception request. We do have to state reasons why. I have some here that I could offer, since I went through and filled out reasons for every possible thing we might do. And what we could say, and I invite others to modify this, I, I plan to display this, but I can't do it, so I'm gonna read it. This exception, if granted, would be the ERC's first approval to build a swimming pool within this 50 seaward feet of the RPA, according to staff. A recent request for a swimming pool within the seaward 50 feet was denied, although the circumstances for every exception request are different. Approving an exception within the seaward, 50 seaward feet for the purpose of building swimming pools may confer a special privilege on this applicant and may establish a precedent for approving future similar applications. Comments, suggestions?
I think that's, I think that sounds just fine.
Okay. Well, then, I.
You're muted there, Barbara, you're trying to say something.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Okay, so I propose that we vote.
Could you, sorry, could you restate that? I think, I think it's important. Motion. Sorry.
I will, I will read it again, and I apologize for not being able to display it because I really want to be able to display it. This exception, if granted, would be the ERC's first approval to build a swimming pool within the 50 seaward feet of the RPA, according to staff. A recent request, wooded Glen, for a swimming pool within the seaward 50 feet was denied. Although the circumstances for every exception request are different, approving an exception within the 50 seaward feet for the purpose of building swimming pools may confer a special privilege on this applicant and may establish a precedent for approving future similar applications. And I'd like to modify that to say a swimming pool instead of swimming pools, since the applicant is only proposing to build one swimming pool. All right, any suggestions to revision, or can we vote on that? Ann.
Oh, did I put my hand up? I was just saying, yeah, at this point, okay, so at this point, I believe we just go and vote on the whole, or since, since one of the conditions has been denied, I think what it means is we don't go on with this.
Yeah, I think that's right. But let's vote on whether this is the language, whether this is the rationale for why.
Okay, I, I move that the language that Betsy proposed be accepted for this part, for Part B.
Second.
Who was that, who seconded that?
David.
Okay. All right. And.
Betsy?
Yes?
I, I would like to note that I will vote for the language, recognizing that it represents the view of the majority opinion. Not that I agree with that opinion, but it's an accurate statement.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And Som, you had your hand up, did you want to say something?
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize I had it up.
Okay, and Mary Smith, you have your hand up, did you want to say something?
I, I didn't vote with the majority, I, I would not vote for this language, just so you understand.
Yes, I do, I understand.
It probably represents very well the majority opinion. In my, you know, hearing all the conversation, but since I wasn't in majority, I wouldn't vote for it.
I understand.
Okay.
They go together. Okay, so I'm going to ask you, everybody, put your hand down. Please put your hand down. And now, if you are in favor of this language, put your hand up. Okay, so we have David, we have Alexis, we have Som. Let's see here, we have Barbara. We have Ann, Ryan, oh, we have Barbara, that's not Ryan. Ed, and Sue. And, okay, so Amy is not in favor of this language. Amy is in favor of this language, okay. All right, so anybody opposed to this language? I think that would be Mary. Everybody put their hand down now. All right. Now, everybody put your hand up, who opposes that language? Mary, did you want to oppose that language?
I thought I raised my hand.
Oh, yes, you did, I'm sorry, just couldn't see it, thank you. All right.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Now we come to the part, if you will scroll down a little bit.
Betsy, sorry, Betsy, it's Brandy, sorry, so just so I have the count, I'm short you. So are you abstaining, or approving, or opposing?
I'm abstaining also.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And next, we have to, we have to eliminate the approved part, and we have to.
Elizabeth, this is David.
Yes?
This is a, there is the potential for review of our decision by the board and then later by the court. And for that reason, even though I agree with everyone else, it'd be nice if we were done. It is only appropriate, and I know Anne didn't agree with this, to actually quickly go through the others and see if there are any others with which we disagree.
Okay.
Okay, let's do this, let's do this quickly then, okay?
We'll try to. We have to be careful, though.
Yeah.
If we just, if we just vote on each of them without further discussion, we'll know where we're at.
Okay, let's do C. The exception as condition is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance and is not of substantial detriment to water quality. Uh, how many people would agree with that?
Um, Betsy, it, it, it uses the words condition, so I think we need to under, unfortunately, understand the conditions in order to vote for this.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, we don't have to, we don't have to put those words in. The exception is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the CBPO and is not a substantial detriment to water quality. We don't have to say as conditioned. We just say the exception is in harmony with the purpose and intent.
Without the, with the condition.
Hold on, hold on a second, hold on a second. We do, we have conditions. We have the conditions as proposed by the staff. So if we, what we're voting on here is the exceptions as conditioned by what the staff proposed. Now, if we had decided to approve, I think we would have reviewed those conditions and amended them, probably. But we haven't, we don't seem to be getting to that point. And so I think we should say as conditioned because Cameron wrote conditions and we all reviewed them. So I think it does fit. We haven't adopted them and we wouldn't, but, um, David's point is, do we think that the application meets this condition? Does that make sense?
Well, I, I would suggest that in this particular case, we can, uh, we can have everyone simply abstain on it because we're not really considering the conditions at this point. And simply say that we're, we're mooting this issue. The others, not.
I'd be agreeable to that because I have some concern about the conditions.
Yeah.
Okay.
We haven't taken them up, so we're just, we're not making a finding on C.
We're not making a finding because we haven't, we aren't delving into the conditions.
Right.
Okay. All right, so we will, um, how about D? The exception request is not based upon conditions or circumstances that are self-created or self-imposed. Do we want to discuss that or do you just want to vote?
Let's just vote and see where we are.
Okay. How many people say that's true? The exception request is not based upon conditions or circumstances that are self-created or self-imposed. Put your hands up. Okay, we have Mary. Ken. Sue. All right. And, all right, that's all that is feeling this way. And how many say no? These, the exception request is based upon conditions or circumstances that are self-created or self-imposed. Mary, put your hand down.
Nope.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. Okay, and so David. Alexis. Ed. Anne. Amy. All say it is self-created or self-imposed. Som and Barbara also. All right. Okay, now I think, um, I think that our resolution will be stronger if we identify, if there's more than one finding that, that the application fails, then I think we should, should discuss it. And this is the second that it fails. So I want to hear what people have to say about their reasoning here and why they think it is, um.
Betsy, if I may, it's Brandy again. I need your vote on that last one.
Okay, I abstained again. All right. Anybody want to offer some, some explanation, the reasons why we believe this?
Yeah.
Okay, Anne, Anne, I take you up on your offer.
Okay, uh, boy, I've been waiting a long time to do this. Yeah, uh, you know, it's, as was said before, it's a difficult property. It's, you got a gully and a creek in the backyard. I don't see that this was required. I, you know, I have many doubts about this property, but I, I just don't, I think this, the need for a pool is a self, a self-imposed condition. And, um, the house, you know, the house is perfectly fine without it. It's, you know, there's no, there's no need for it. So, I mean, um, it's not necessary for medical or health or, uh, material, you know, employment conditions to, to do something like that. So I don't think, I don't think it's, I think it is self, I think it is self-imposed.
All right. Barbara, do you want to contribute something? All right, Amy, you want to say something?
Barbara, you're muted if you're speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It just basically affects some, that was said early in the meeting, that no one needs a swimming pool. That, that's, that's the bottom line.
Okay, and Som, you wanted to say something?
Uh, yes, I agree with the last two speakers. You know, they seem to have covered most of what I wanted to say. It's not an absolute essential. You could, you know, well, the, the previous owners have done without it for the last forty years, fifty years, how long the house has been there. And trying to justify that this is essential now is beyond me.
Okay, um, Amy, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to restate that nobody really needs a pool. It's not like, so for me, this is a self-imposed issue. I, I understand why they want a pool and I totally respect it. Um, this property is, I, I just feel like this is just the wrong location and I think that we're getting, we are getting as an ERC into, you know, that 50-foot seaward, which I just think is that hurdle that I am having a lot of trouble with. Sorry, I keep, I keep coming back to that, but I just think this is a bad location for a pool. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so let me offer a, perhaps a piece of language that might state the reasons. I'm not sure this is the best. The applicant's request to place a swimming pool so extremely close to the stream is essentially a self-created condition and is a use of the property, an expanded use of the property, um, beyond the rest. Let me work on this a little bit.
If I might be helpful, and this is Mary, so it's a little bit weird. I think you need to tie it in with the 50 feet. Otherwise, it's going to be inconsistent with some of your other approvals. Just because a pool is a, you, you know, some people, what you're saying is a pool is a convenience, but not a necessity. And you've got to tie it into something else because otherwise that'll affect some of your previous decisions. Or you're being consistent with them.
Yeah.
I think that's a good point. I agree with it.
Yes, I do too.
Yeah, who brought that up? I didn't see before David.
That was, I think, Mary?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, so, um, what about the following? Well, the applicant's request to place a swimming pool so extremely close to the stream and within the 50 seaward feet is essentially a self-created condition. It's the, a lot is not appropriate for this, this use.
I would, I would add or replace that last phrase with, uh, the, the owner having purchased within, well, well after the RPA was designated, uh, had, uh, had noticed, had noticed that, uh, it, they would be required, uh, to address the 50-foot seaward issue. Something like that.
Well, I'm not, this is Amy. I, I'm not sure that they received notice. They, they just, as, as buyers were made aware that this was one of the things that could be on that property. And that's, they're up to their, to them as buyers to do the due diligence. So from a real estate perspective, you know, that's in the residential property disclosure and they have, they probably received that with their contract. If they didn't, then they should talk to the realtor about that. But, um, so I'm not sure they received any other type of notice that there was, the 50-foot seaward was an issue. It just put the responsibility on them to do their due diligence.
It's, in the law, it's called constructive knowledge and the way you generally say it is new or should have known.
Well, that's. But the thing is, David, I guess I can't quite go along with that because that would imply that anybody um, who bought a property that had RPA on it should know that they, that there are restrictions. Certainly, they, they would have known that they might not be able to put their swimming pool in there.
So Betsy, Virginia is a buyer beware state and it is the responsibility of the buyer to do their due diligence.
Right.
I con, I concur that, uh, you are, as someone affected by this, you are not necessarily told and it's still your responsibility.
The, the point is well made, though. Just because they know it doesn't mean it's going to prohibit that use. Uh, but it does make it a, a self-imposed event. And that's the point here.
Yeah, I want to turn to our, would it help anybody if I read the, um, guidance that we received to D, from DEQ about this?
I think it might be more helpful to just actually cite what the, like what the rules are about the property owners. And, and we can say that it's self-imposed because it is part of their due diligence to know and to, and therefore that it's an accessory that's self-imposed.
May not, that may not.
It is one of the reasons we have to get plans approved before you do anything on the site. And if you didn't know that, you know, if you wanted to put a big structure out there, you'd have to get plans approved and the county would uh, look at all the rules and then reject it. So it's the same issue here. So, you know, us trying to find a reason seems to be going beyond what we should be doing.
Yes, I think Som has a point. Maybe we can restate essentially what we, uh, said in the previous, uh, what was it, NB? Or less restate it.
All right, well, you want me to reread this? The exception would be the, for our ERC's first approval to build a swimming pool within the 50 seaward feet of the RPA. A recent request for a pool within the 50 seaward was denied, although the circumstances for every exception request are different. Approving an exception within the 50 seaward feet would confer a special privilege and may establish a precedent for approving future similar applications. Yeah, I wish this DEQ guidance were better.
Yeah. Does anybody remember the?
The, the way I interpret that is I have some sympathy for a person who uh, buys a house where the previous owner has perhaps put in a pool in violation or something. And now we're trying to correct the, a bad situation. So I would sometimes say that's not necessarily the, um, applicant's, um, self-created condition. But in this case, I do have to admit that they, um, have no reasonable expectation that we would approve a pool. We would have to consider all the facts and that, um, they must have bought the house, we can assume, with that ex, with that, knowing that risk. And therefore it is, um, um, basically self-created. Does that make a little sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes a little sense.
Okay. Uh, this is Anne. I, I just want to say that there was a case where a couple needed to put in a handicap ramp and their whole house was like in the RPA or something like that. And this was not a self-imposed condition. They needed to put in a ramp. It took us about 20 minutes to go through the whole thing and say yes. So there are conditions which are not self-imposed or that we can do, uh, where, as I said, there's cases of health and welfare and employment that might be affected. And those are not self-imposed conditions, but doing something like this, yeah, it is. Uh, you know, that, that nobody's health or welfare is going to be affected by denial.
All right, how about this? The applicant's request to place a swimming pool so extremely close to the stream within the 50 seaward feet is essentially a self-created condition. Applicant had no reasonable expectation that the pool would be approved. Approval would depend upon the appropriateness of the project for the site. So, how's that work?
I think that's good.
Excellent, excellent.
Oh, this is so hard. Yeah. Okay. Does, um, do we want to vote on that language?
I move that we approve that language.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that it? In favor of this language, put up your hands. I'm going to count you so we're clear. All right, Ken, Amy, David, Sue. Well, essentially, everybody's, everybody wants to get off the, out of the meeting. It's the real truth here. All right. Okay. All right, now I think we come to the part where we need to fill in the blanks of the particular RPA, number and everything. And the last part, we have to delete the thing that says we approve it and we have to insert the.
Sorry, I have to ask you one more time. Did you abstain on that or are you voting to approve that last item?
I'll vote to approve that.
Okay.
You keep embarrassing me.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Okay, so we're going to.
I, I would abstain or vote no on the last language since I have a different position on number.
Okay.
On, on two.
So Mary, are you opposing or abstaining? I have to put.
I'll, I'll just abstain.
Okay, thank you.
It, it's just really a result of, you know, whatever. Okay.
Okay, so now we are going to get rid of the approval part.
Sorry, Betsy, we have E. Are we, um, are we going to add to, uh, condition E or rather criteria E?
We're going to delete that.
Okay.
If we, if we deny, we don't impose any conditions. We can't impose conditions if we deny.
Right.
Right.
In fact, we're going to delete the ones that we haven't, um,
Okay.
We're, we're going to only include, I guess, B and D.
B, okay.
Right? Isn't that correct?
Great, yes.
And we're going to delete the one about water quality. Okay, and then we're going to put in.
Okay.
Okay, and then we're going to delete approve. And we're going to delete. And we're going to delete the first, and we're going to keep in denies. That's what we're doing. And now, I think we should vote on the thing as a whole. And does anybody insist upon me reading the thing aloud, the whole thing? Or, or Ed, since it started off as his motion? And he can't read it aloud, because he doesn't have the pieces that I've got.
I, I think we just vote on this, and.
Yeah, I agree. We've already gone over every point. Let's just vote it up or down.
We have. All right, so put your hands down. And then we're going to vote on this motion as a whole. And I'm going to say, how many people are in favor of this motion?
To deny the motion.
The motion to deny. Yeah, you got to take that out there, because that's. All right, so we have, people are voting on the motion to deny. I guess I will also vote on that, since this point I'm. Okay, so we have Betsy. David. Barbara. Anne. Amy. Ed. Sue. Alexis. All right. Okay, put all your hands down, please. And how many people vote no?
I, I'd like to add that I respect the opinions of those who have voted differently. It's just that I felt that overall, the mitigating work in the, by restoring some of the vegetation opposite on the things, would ultimately help Chesapeake Bay. And that was my reasoning. But I do respect other opinions for.
And, and I would, I would second that, even though I'm voting against the resolution.
And I am very sympathetic with your thinking on that, because I had many of the same thoughts, that it would actually improve.
And this is Amy, and I also, I also agree with Ken on that. That, you know, the conditions would have improved water quality. I get that. But so would every, us going to every other RPA owner that has grass, and, you know, does that in the plain area. So it's just, it, it, that was just complicated, you know? I couldn't, still couldn't get past the 50-foot buffer, so.
Okay, but you've got your hand up, which means you're voting.
I just wanted to speak, though, I'm sorry. I just.
All right. So we have, the people who voted for this motion include Betsy, David, Barbara, Anne, Amy, Ed, Sue, Alexis.
No, Amy did not, no, Amy did not vote for this. I voted for the denial.
You are voting for it, that's what this is. This is the denial.
Votes, not the second round of votes.
Yes, that's right. That's, she was reading the first round, Amy.
Yeah, the, the hands for the second round are still raised, so it's confusing.
Okay, thank you.
So I think the people who voted for denial are Betsy, David, Barbara, Anne, Amy, Ed, Sue, and Alexis. And the people who voted no are Ken and Mary. Anybody want to contest that? Even though what it says on the screen, denial is blotted out, but it shouldn't be.
Do we have an abstention? Because I'm missing one vote from Psalm.
Oh, Psalm, did you want to vote?
Yes, I voted yes on the first one.
Okay, all right, Psalm is also voting to deny, correct?
Yes.
All right. Okay, now. The chair calls for a vote. The result of the vote is that one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine people voted to deny. Two people voted against it. And the applicant, and this information will be in the letter that comes to the applicant, has the right to appeal an adverse decision by the Exception Review Committee within 30 days by appealing to the Board of Supervisors. And I think that is the end of our consideration of this matter. Unfortunately, we have one more piece of business here before we sign off.
And I, and I move to have Anne Cantor be the chair.
Well, gee, thanks. No, no.
All right, let's get on with it. Is there a?
Okay. We are supposed to have an election, the first meeting of the year. And as it turns out, this is the first meeting of the year. The current officers, which include me as the chair, Ed Monroe as the vice chair, and Sue Schuman as the secretary, are willing to continue to serve, if you want us to. And also, I would certainly entertain any motions for any nominations from the floor. If anybody wants to raise their hand. And Amy Gould has her hand up.
Um, I just wanted to make a motion, since it's kind of late in the day, that we go ahead and approve the existing, as a motion that the existing officers continue in that role.
And I'd like to say that. This is Barbara.
Okay, Barbara's second.
All good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Thank you all very much, I'm sorry we went over.
And thank you for doing this again.
Oh, my God.
Anne, good luck to you, and have fun.
Yeah.
Enjoy yourself. And I will. Thank you.
Anne, it's been such a pleasure working with you, really. It has been, thank you.
Yeah. Anne, we're glad to hear it.
Yeah, it feels like some history is walking off the stage now.
Exactly.
Sometimes I said something I didn't entirely believe myself, just to get the discussion going. So I didn't always hold the positions I was putting forward. There are any number of times I was playing devil's advocate, just, you know, just so that we could get out topics and stuff. So I, I don't know.